All right. We'll get them out in one minute.
All right, it was good seeing you. Oh my gosh. Oh my gosh.
Are y'all ready?
Yes.
Y'all ready? Lisa, you ready? Robert, is your stuff ready? Okay. Time is now six thirty. Call this meeting to order. Mr. Hodges, if you'd like to lead us in the prayer and pledge.
Sure. Dear heavenly Father, I would thank you for today. I would thank you for this time together as a community. I'm afraid that the decision you made is due to the benefit of our community as a whole. While we watch you make those decisions this
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, folks, hold on, let me move my microphone over so I can hear it a little bit. All right. As we say in every meeting, the rules of decorum are in effect. The next item will be citizens' comments. Mr. Swalgey, you're the only one on the citizens' comments. So if you'll come up there, state your name and address and turn the microphone on when you get up there, if you don't mind. Turn the microphone on when you get up there, too. All righty. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's on.
All right, you guys are going to be there with me. I forgot my glasses, so it's pretty small print for me, but. Charles Swalgey, 262 Meadow Park, McLindham Chisholm. I have previously sent out letters trying to get the info about what's happening in our neighborhood. Uh, my goodness. Voicing my displeasure I have with the way the previous mayor and his cronies have jammed a winery down our throats with no regard to any of the McLindham-Chisholm citizens. I am sending the letter after having a chance to speak with Greg Rosini personally. In our conversation, I believe we enlightened each other on how the previous non-elected mayor and his cronies not only deceived the citizens affected by the new winery, but also the winery owners themselves.
Were deceived and you believed in the city thought and planned this out. The Rosinians came to the city with a plan for economic development in McLindham-Chisholm with a construction of a winery and presented several different properties options that were considered, they were considering purchasing. At the time, the city, led by our previously non-elected mayor and his cronies, guided them toward the South 205 as the best location despite the existing city planning specifically and only two-year-old future use plan clearly showing this is not the desired location for commercial development. In fact, the city's town planning zoning commission further reiterated this in council by denying the zoning and the land usage charge. Oh, and change requests. But like everything else, previous leaders did not listen to the citizens. Now, previous mayor is trying to blame the city planner for how this was handled when ultimately the city council and the mayor had the final say. The list of mistakes the previous mayor's cronies made just on this little part of city planning is really all
Go ahead, Charles. Everybody's getting an amber alert. No, you're fine.
The list of mistakes that the mayor made, the decisions I've now reported to the council and the mayor will follow will follow the plan in place for the city and at least notify the citizens because ultimately we're the ones who have to work here. So here we are, a group of owners of a winery and together we are forced to live with this situation. I feel the best way to protect our property is to communicate with Greg and Carol Rosini. Some of the things that I spoke to Greg about were the daily rentals. How the issues of noise, lighting, scene language were unacceptable, acceptable. But the most important thing was the unsafe feeling I had in my empty backyard with my five and six-year-old. Not only, not knowing who is over there every day. We also talked about how I would fight him if he tried to build anything on the back part of the property. He was very receptive to my parents' concern. The Rosinis have made some changes since I have voiced my concern. They have removed the outdoor speakers. They are working on cutting down the light pollution and they have addressed the obscene language to their renters. He said that he would, they called him when we had any other issues as far as the concerns of the daily rental and the safety issue that I asked about. He asked me if he would give him a few weeks to wind down the already greasily booked rental. He also mentioned that he had considered living in the house with the neighbors in the front yard before all the movement against the winery. I told him I thought it would be go a long way and give the comfort to the neighbors, but he chose to live there. So I concluded at this time that I am willing to put faith in my neighbor as I do think he and his wife have more concern about the neighbor than the city has shown to the citizens at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles.
Really, my last.
I understand. I understand. You'll have to fill out one of the sheets to Yeah, there's a sheet in the back. If you want to fill it out real quick and hand it to Lisa, absolutely. Hand that one to Lisa. If you'll, Lisa. And that's, that's fine. You're, you're, you're good. If you'll just state your name and your address, sir. Can you push the button on there? It's not on. One of those two mics, if you, there you go. Thank you.
Moved out here in eighty-five, okay? Was on the planning zoning committee for probably four years. Late eighties, early nineties. And when I moved out here, I had no idea of the moving next to a place that was a day rental place. And I'm sure the people have real good intentions. But the noise and the lights are kind of out of control. Okay? My house is about hundred fifty, two hundred yards away from the pool. When I was on the committee, I never had the city council overrule.
All righty, thank you so much, sir. And that's Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Wilder. All right. Any other citizens' comments for this evening? Going once? Going twice? All right, citizens' comments are closed for this evening. All right, moving on to number five. Approval of minutes for the July twenty-third, twenty nineteen city council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll approve those minutes.
Do you have a, do I have a motion to approve? I've got a motion. Do I have a second? Okay. I've got a motion and second to approve the July twenty-third, twenty nineteen city council meeting minutes. Any discussion? All in favor of approving minutes? Aye, aye. Show that unanimous? All right, we'll move on to the next item. Discussion and action regarding an ordinance approving an amendment to the annual service and assessment plan update for Sonoma Verde, or for Sonoma Public Improvement District. Ms. Lisa?
Yes, this is an amendment to a previously filed service and assessment plan in our pit administrators. This is Mary Petty, and she's here to present the information to you.
Mayor and council, good to see you again. You approved the, a service and assessment plan associated with the sale of bonds. We were hired a couple of weeks prior to that, and so that bond transaction proceeded forward. We have since audited that service and assessment plan. This has been signed off by your bond counsel, your financial advisor, the developers' counsel, and the developer. And so these changes, we want to walk through with you in detail. Very short detail. There's a presentation, and Vanessa Stowe's the vice president in our firm. I'm going to have her give that presentation because I get to run to a public hearing on a really popular item just down the road. So I'm going to let her walk you through that, but I wanted to go ahead and tell you that we've audited it. Everything's fine. We just need to create, correct some details, and we had the developers sign off. And the document in front of you has the developer's signature on the landowner's consent, and that didn't come until this afternoon. But we wanted to just make sure that we were ticking and tying all the pieces together. So I'm going to let Vanessa walk you through those changes. She should be able to answer any questions on you. She actually performed the audit on your SAP, so she's well-versed in this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor, council members, hello. Lisa is going to help with my clicking today, thankfully. The first thing that I want to walk through with you guys is the removal of the major improvement area excluding Phase One assessment. This was levied in the original SAP in twenty fifteen. Assessments go stale after two years pursuant to the statute. There was nothing collected in twenty sixteen, nothing collected in twenty seventeen, nothing collected in twenty eighteen, however. It was lowered, and we believe that has to do with the Phase Two being levied. They took a portion of the major improvements and attributed it to that bond issue. So it has officially been about four years. It was removed in the twenty nineteen SAP update approved earlier this year, and we just confirmed the removal of that, so by statute, that has been removed. And going forward, if we levy any more bonds on the remainder of the property, we will attribute their share of the major improvements to that, so it'll be covered. You can go next, Lisa. Yes, yes. The next one is a simple, simple fix. The previous map, if you see the circles, it had stated that Phase One C, the green on the right, was actually located within the Phase One boundaries, which made it look like it was getting benefit from the Phase One assessments. It was not. Phase, Phase Number One C is actually in Phase Number Two. A little confusing. But improvement area Number One C slash Phase One C, it is actually within Phase Two, so we've corrected the map to be a little more clear, showing the blue is Phase Two, the red is Phase One, and the green is included in Phase Two, but it is actually improvement area Number One C. Next up, we have the landowner consent to increased assessments. Mary mentioned this when she was talking about the SAPs. We did just get that earlier today. So if you flip to the very back, it's in Exhibit C. The landowner has signed. Between the twenty eighteen SAP update to the twenty nineteen SAP update, as you can see, there were two unit increases between improvement area Number Two. And so because of that, the assessment per equivalent unit was not altered. It was left the same, therefore it caused an under levy on the allocation for improvement Number One C and an over levy for improvement area Number Two, which usually we cannot over levy, but because it's one landowner and they understood what happened, they, they signed the consent form stating that they consent to the, that thirty-six thousand dollar over levy. So we are completely okay there going forward. And then last but not least, we have the inclusion of the assessment rolls by parcel. The twenty nineteen SAP update approved earlier this summer did not have an actual assessment roll for parcel by parcel. They had the annual installment schedule showing the life of project, but they didn't have each parcel within the district that needs to be billed and what their actual annual installment is for each year. And Rockwall CAD actually needs the parcel number and the amount due to put on the tax bills. So what we did is we went ahead and created a full parcel by parcel list of everybody in the pit, so if they want to pull up that SAP that you have, they can look up their tax ID and see exactly what their assessment is for due January thirty-first, twenty nineteen. And then we also have that on our website as well for them to access if they want to look at that. But yeah, that, that is all that we really have. We've fixed all of those, and everything seems to be running smoothly so far, and if you have any questions, I can definitely answer.
Basically, it's just an update and some correction.
Yes.
All right, one of the microphones is dying. The one to your, yeah, and then if you'll just turn the other one off. For whatever reason, the batteries, some days they last, some days they don't.
Thank you.
Counsel, you have any questions for her on the presentation at this point? All right. Entertaining a motion to approve or prefer this amendment? This amendment to the service and, service and assessment plan?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amendment to the annual service and assessment plan as stated for the Sonoma Verde pit.
All right, do you have a second? I'll second that. All right, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? There's no discussion. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Show that unanimous? All right, moving on to six point two, discussion
Thank you.
Discussion and direction of staff regarding all matters related to the proposed budget for fiscal year starting October first, twenty nineteen, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty, including but not limited to expected revenues and expenditures, debt obligations, effective tax rate, rollback rate, and setting a public hearing date. Ms. Lisa, I'll turn it up to you at this point.
All right. The outcome for tonight, the budget and tax rate are related, so if it's our, their city attorney, can I talk about those at the same time a little bit?
Ma'am, thank you very much. I'm sorry if I didn't say that. Thank you for your time.
Budget and tax rate together.
Yeah, I think they're, no, yeah, it's fine. Because that affects the budget.
Okay, so what the outcome of tonight needs to be is I have to send the maximum tax rate notice to the paper by tomorrow morning. So after we talk about the budget a little bit, anything you want to include or take out of our budget worksheet. I also have Carl Crowley, the planner, here to talk about comp plan a little bit and pricing for that that you all requested. But at the end of the day, I need a maximum tax rate number to put into the paper. Once that's advertised, you can back off of that tax rate, but you will not be able to go higher than that tax rate. So that number's kind of important. Then we're also going to be setting dates for the public hearings for both the budget and the tax rate tonight. So that's kind of where we need to end up by the end of the day. So since Mr. Crowley is here, would you like to start with Mr. Crowley to talk about the comp plan proposed pricings for updating that?
Absolutely. I know his time's important. Hey. How are you?
I'm already winning. Carl Crowley, nine hundred Jackson Street, Dallas, Texas. For the three of y'all that were here last night, we discussed just looking at the comp plan and seeing if we need an update or don't need an update, and if so, do we need a whole update or parts update? And, and I don't know if Lisa, did you provide them with this? What we talked about is, is I think the first thing that needs to happen, and, and and what I've done on all these rates is, is put an hourly not to exceed amount because we could get into one of those and say, have one meeting with you or an advisory committee and say, hey, we like the way it is, and that's boom, there ain't no reason to spend thousands of dollars for, hey, it looks okay now. We don't need to change that. That's why I think the first thing we need to do is, is we talked about last night as a visioning statement. Do we, are we, do we want to where we wanted to be four or five years ago? Is that the direction we want to go? And that can sort of set the tone for everything else. And that's that first item there, and it could be lots of meetings or just a couple of meetings. That's sort of saying, again, with the hourly rate in there. And then, and then we talked about, there's a lot of individual sections in the comp plan. Some of them, there's no reason to change. We talked about demographics. There's no reason to look at that because the new census comes out in a year and a half. What are we going to do between now and a year and a half? Maybe in a year and a half, we look at it again. We talked about last night, or I did most of the talking, I guess, but one of the things that's coming up is 205 and Tech Dot and how that's going to change all the commercial land zoning and everything in the city, and there's really not a component that deals specifically with that. So I think that's an important thing that needs to be handled sooner than later. Tech Dot is slow, but eventually they'll get around to things as they always do. And then the, the other new sort of component in there is maybe an economic development component. Where do we want to go? Do we want to start striving to find new businesses? We even talked about an industrial component in some of the areas more towards the Kaufman, the Terrell end of the town, where the, the school district is probably not lending itself to new residential development as much as the Rockwall end. Do we want to look at some industrial uses in there? And I don't mean General Motors coming here or something to that, but, but more commercial type development. And then finally, if we decide to do things, there's obviously an adoption phase going to the community and getting that input, going through the plan commission and the city council. And we talked about last night, is it just the council that we deal with? Do we appoint a committee? Smaller committee better than a bigger committee. We can get more things done. So I just sort of gave you a, since I was tasked with a turnaround of less than twenty-four hours, a sort of a shopping list of some ideas. You know, if you put money in the budget and don't spend it, obviously that's fine, but I think there's, there's some pick and choose type stuff. I think from, from our talking in the office, when we see the zoning map and the comp plan and 205 and changing that, I think that, and the, the conversations that Lisa and I are having with developers once a week or something, dealing with commercial uses and stuff, that's something I think needs to get a handle on sooner than later. Because Tech Dot will sort of mess with a lot of that commercial zoning up and down there, and strips were good a long time ago, but there's a, there's new ways to do things. And then we talked about last night, come September one, you get out of the aesthetics business. So some of the things that we need to figure out how, how that's going to happen, there's some webinars. I'll, I'll give Lisa some ideas of some webinars from TML and other places. The APA are putting out webinars on, on what can and can't be done and the ramifications of that. I know we're going to study on it because it, it does have ramifications. But there's, there's maybe methodology to, to still keep some of those safeguards in there, so. That's it, I guess. Answer any questions you have. I just wanted to give you a shopping list. So.
Calling up
Sure.
So I don't assume this, but you listed a hundred and twenty dollars an hour for that first visioning segment. Is each
Yeah, that's our, we, we have a Yeah, we have a rate schedule of, I think it's ninety, one twenty, and one sixty. Ninety is, is our tech people and GIS stuff and things like that. That one twenty is, is sort of a mid-range. We thought just do it that way. This is, it's not a formal public hearing as much as a gathering kind of stuff. That's a good range, we thought. And obviously, if we get into it and we say it's, we're going to do a commercial thing, we say ten thousand, and we're just having neighborhood meetings, we're sucking up the, if we're out here every other night, which I am out here every other night, then, you know, then I, then I gave you the wrong amount of money. I'm eating that, anything over that. That's why that safeguard is there. I know you have to put that in your budget. If it takes me ten thousand or twenty thousand dollars and I got ten thousand in it, then I'm eating ten. So.
Based on your, based on that initial overview, let's say that we decided to how would you break it down if we wanted to look at a little bit of economic development and commercial?
Well, some of those overlap, and I think we could probably combine those. You know, it's, if we combine a couple of them, we get the, you know, if we're talking about two subjects, it's, it's I'm here for one meeting versus a meeting and then another meeting and another meeting. So, so we can work towards combining some of those. If, if it makes sense. I, I think really the, the visioning thing is, we talked about that most last night, is we might get into a two or three meetings with, with y'all and some, some community members, and we just go, hey, we're still doing good. We like the vision that was in there. And it's, it's four or five hours a time, and then It's a bad mic day, isn't it?
Well, there are days where
You're just electric, Carl.
I, but, but, well, we'll leave that alone. So now I've just completely lost my train of thought. Yeah, combining two and some, I, I still think that visioning is, is the key, but again, if, if we're, if we've got the right vision, then, then that may come into a couple thousand dollars versus seventy-five hundred, and then if you've got in a budget I'll keep my hands to myself. It's not me, I don't think. Okay, I'll just keep soldiering through. So, you know, if, if you put a budget in there for X number of dollars, then we can shift how many things we do, and if, and if one of them comes in at a couple thousand and, and we need to shift it to another one, that's, you know, that's how y'all's budget works. I understand that. Because we may get into something and say, you know, we don't care about that. We thought we did. Let's move on to the next one.
Any more questions, Carl?
You bet.
So I guess the question becomes, do you want to put a number in there for the comp plan update?
For what?
For the, for a comp plan update. Do you include up to, I think if you add it all together, it's about thirty-five thousand dollars. And he said you didn't have to do all of it. You could kind of pick and choose and, and define that comp plan later. But for budgeting purposes, did you want to include that amount?
Counsel? And we have a city that we have to look at the vision for the future.
The two things that concern me the most is the obviously the changes with 205. You know, we as a city we need to plan that versus allowing 205 to make those changes.
Yeah, we have to, we have to lead and decide what we are going to be, not let something else dictate what we
Right.
get stuck with or left with.
Because again, the, the business strip down 205 was the thing to do twenty, thirty years ago, but it's not necessarily maybe not the best way to do it anymore. ago, but it's not necessarily, maybe not the best way to do it anymore.
Right.
Carl, one other question I forgot to ask you, sir. And you may have answered this last night. I want to make sure that I get it right. As far as your timeline, if you do a refresh on the comp plan, what would be your timeline on another refresh or a complete redo? What's the lifespan? Would you estimate?
Well, I think it needs to be refreshed or updated. I think a comp plan needs to be updated probably every five years just to get you out further in advance. Obviously, you're growing faster than picking a city that's not growing as fast.
So it's very similar to like a, a business plan?
Right, right. If you're, if IBM or pick an old company, it doesn't, they're not growing as fast. Hopefully, they're growing for their sake, but they're not worried about some doubling in size. And likely, you could be doubling in size in five years.
Absolutely.
It's not, it's not uncommon for cities that are growing, that are about our size, to at least have some sort of review three to five years.
Right.
Look at more of an overhaul, maybe around the five years, but at least having a cursory review by someone around the three or four-year mark, just so you can kind of start having an idea if in your five...
And, and that's when you get into the chance where 205 that you mentioned, if 205 is not going to be changed or anything, that's not something we're studying right now, but that's something that's on the near horizon that could have a drastic effect. Potential, it may not. It may not have a drastic effect, but it's something you need to get a handle on, that once that's studied, 205 is probably not going to get improved again for another 10 or 15 or 20 years, that then, okay, you've now settled that, you know? And then we'll worry about something else, you know? You know, and, and we talked about last night that, that not part of this, but something that needs to be thought of in the, in the near future is you've got a lot of large PDs that were done in the 2007 recession period that aren't going to get built that way.
Right.
You know, that's something that needs to be, it's not in the comp plan, but it, but it could lead into the comp plan, and that visioning stuff is, you've got some stuff out there that by sheer density are less than an acre for, for just the size. You know, the lots may be bigger, but you've got a lot of area. That's something that needs, do we want to be there or do, where do we want to be? We mentioned last night, do we want to be in an acre and a half or do we want to be something? That's something that handled in the comp plan. And then in the future, zoning and other things need to be updated to take care of that.
You know, we have, we have the Economic Development Committee. How, how appropriate would be to charter them to determine the vision for the city? I thought that's what they were supposed to be doing, but what, you know, what do y'all think about that?
Don't have an answer right now because they don't have a status on what the committee has done at this moment.
But it seems like, like that would be a great place to start with the members of that Economic Development Committee and perhaps a member of Planning and Zoning and a member of Board of Adjustments to, to start looking at what the vision for the city is. I'm not sure that we need to have consultants do the, you know, run the, run the brainstorming sessions, come up with the plan, that kind of thing, unless that would make us get it done because we've had, you know, that we've paid money to get it done. I would like to see if we could do it in-house with what we have as our existing resources at this point, and if we find that we're not getting anywhere, then we, then we hire outside. But it would be, I think it would be prudent for us to use existing resources.
I think we need to at least ask them because they may be, they may have a big plan. We just don't know it yet. So until we ask, you know, because I would hate it that they've worked and worked and worked, and then we do something and then they're like, what the heck?
So we have this work session.
Let me contact, you're supposed to be kind of overseeing that committee and see before we do that.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I will share with you that a year, year and a half ago, we did task the P and Z with trying to update. We got a little bit busy with developments and it kind of got set aside, but they really struggled on their own to try to pull it together. So even if you do a lot of the work committee level, you may still want to bring in Carl's team for advice here and there.
Right.
Or to tie it up in a nice, pretty package towards the end. So even if you don't budget for all of this, you may want to budget at least some for it. Just a thought.
Well, what I like on it, of course, the council is going to make this decision, is I like the thought of having it there, budgeted for, but if we don't use it, it's no harm, no foul. If we budget it for it, but we don't use it, because if we come back and, you know, weeks, months, whatever later, and decide, oh, maybe we should do it this way, we've allocated for it so it's not trying to figure out how to, to make it happen. Because what you're asking right now is just, are we going to budget for it? Doesn't necessarily mean we have to use it, correct?
Counsel? What do you think?
I agree with Councilman Kibb. If we can, if we can get...
If we can do it in-house, I have no problem with that.
In-house, then that's awesome. It's great.
But if we have to use some from out of house?
I think at some point, we'll probably have to lean on outside references.
Why don't we just do like whatever its top is supposed to be?
The top's like 35.
Yeah. Just go half of that.
Counsel? So Carl, what would be the max, you would say, overall refresh rate? Sorry to keep bringing that up.
That's all right. I need the steps. You mean like take the, take the existing plan and just refresh the whole thing?
Your ideal version of refresh, what would you have in mind?
You know, I would think we could probably do it for, for not much more than that because that's the main guts of that. Probably, probably 50. Because I think some of that component is the 205 stuff, which is a new component. I, I, you know, if, you know, I'm tooting my own horn, but I think that needs to be done. And, and be honest, I don't know if you're economic, I don't know the people. They, they could be all planners and economic analysts and stuff like that, but I think there needs to be some outside input. They're going to be, you've got to get information from Tech Dot and all that kind of stuff. So I think, that, that I think the engineer even gets involved in because with Tech Dot and curb cuts and all that kind of stuff, it's almost what I want to call an area plan, but it's a long skinny area. It's a specialized thing that almost would be a standalone type scenario versus the comp plan. Even if you did no update to any of the rest of it, I think that needs to be done just because, and, you know, could it be done next year? Yeah, I don't know what the, Tech Dot's not going to be in and out in, in the next fiscal year, they're not. If they started today, it's going to be longer than that and not starting today. But I think that's something that, because that has a ramification of then changing zoning and things of, of taking or changing people's rights, and that gets into a little more difficulty, obviously. So that's probably a, all the way through is, including the zoning component of that is a two, two to three-year process, I would think. Just because you're, some people are going to be text dotted. Obviously, they're compensated for it and everything. It's not like they're just not going to get any money out of the deal. But, but now their property is, is probably not worth much of anything commercially because they've gone from this wide to this wide, and there's not a whole lot of this wides being in commercial. And you need to look at nodes versus strips.
I mean, I think I would prefer to hold off for a year. Our plan is three years old now. I prefer to hold off for a year, try to get our in-house team together to work it, and if that doesn't meet with success, then next year, we, we put it in there.
I agree with you. For three years, three years out, do we, do we even want to budget for anything?
I would, I would recommend not budgeting this year.
Okay. Lisa, did you get that?
Yes, sir.
What other questions on that portion?
Ray couldn't be here tonight. He had another engagement. But he's going to take the worksheet that you all worked on yesterday, and he's going to update those numbers. You asked me to come back with a couple of changes, public notices. If you deduct out what we put for the PID, you can take out about 1,800 for public notices. Let me see here. Public notices. Give me a second. Here we go, 422. So I think you could safely take out 1,800. And then keep in mind, too, that the remaining amount there of that 10-9, if you take out 1,800 and the rest of that, most of it is going to be, a little bit of it's going to be our publications, but most of it is going to be recouped from application fees. And then as far as postage, you asked me to look at that. If you look at stamps and what we spent for postcards for the survey, it was between 3,500 and 4,000. So I think you could, the, the postcards would have come out of printed materials, and then the stamps may have its own line under postage. But I think we can adjust the budget down maybe 3,500 for those things if we don't do another survey.
So 3,500 below instead of 5,000?
I, I think you could reduce it by 3,500.
Oh, wow. We, you don't have the 12 weeks' expenditures, are you? Because Ray hasn't...
Ray has it. What you, what you did yesterday, though, I mean, we juggled back and forth a little bit on a couple of things, but I think she ended up taking 12,000 out of his that ended up being kind of duplicate entries. And then we just have a few other things here that don't really add up to large amounts. So I think we can probably just clean this up. The budget itself, once we kind of get it cleaned up, I do have to file that in my office by the end of the next week to kind of stay on schedule. You can still adjust it after that because you won't be adopting it until September, but I still have to file something in my office for public inspection. So what we would do is, based on any other input that you give us tonight, we would clean this up, and then we would file it in my office. And that's what we would show the public, we'll put it on the website. And then everybody will just understand that we'll still have public hearings on it, and there's still room for discussion before adoption.
Question?
Well, I just feel like I've been looking at a piece of paper that's outdated, and I'm not, I don't know what, who knows what it is. Because we can make changes. And I feel, I feel prepared to maybe a tax rate without, without data intervention.
I think you only took out about 18,000. And the other question is going to be what you do with salaries.
Question?
Well, I need to firm up the number as much as I can. So at some point, you may want to recess and discuss salaries and come out with a, an overall number for me to put in the budget for increase, decrease, or stay neutral.
Is there any way we can get ahold of Ray and ask him to email you what he's worked on?
He is in another...
He's with another client tonight. It takes him a little bit to update the, the worksheets.
Well, what could we, go over what we added so we all can be comfortable with what we added?
Okay, well, let's, before we do that, it is 7:12. We're going to take a minute because this end man has to use restroom. So we'll recess, give us 10 minutes max.
Yes.
No, thank you, Bill.
Been very well. Been busy, but that's good. Denver. But you know, believe it or not, it was actually, it was 88 and sunny, with Derek for a family reunion. Unbelievably sunny the whole time up here. Yeah, let me tell you, I went on a couple of hikes. They were more like, you know, gag crawl weasels than hikes, if anything, because of the altitude. Yes. They were very difficult. It's amazing how easy it is to breathe when you get back, though. Wow, Lisa actually looked at it. That's unusual. Thanks, Lisa. You're so wonderful. You're a great builder.
You want some?
Nice. I say stuff I've always said, Lisa's like, you want some? Oh, my gosh. I've maintained one excellent coworker for months. She laughs my voice, Joe. She's so suspicious.
It's never been a topic you're having in discussion.
All right.
I think to be able to figure out some of these numbers, we need to talk about the personnel issue of it in executive session first before we come back to some of those, to be able to effectively give that number. So at this point, we're going to pull off a 6.2 and go to 9.1 recess to executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.074, personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of public officer, employee, city administrator slash city secretary, assistant city secretary, building permit technician, fire chief, fire marshal, assistant fire chief, and firefighter. That's a multiple. So it's 7:18, we will reserve, or recess into executive session.
I'm going to stay out here.